I think human. I have it pulled up. Yeah, I have it, I have it pulled up.
And what part of Washington are you from?
I live in Shoreline, just north of Seattle.
Okay. We got a little bit of winter snow last weekend and it's slowly melting.
Well, I hope it warms up a bit.
Okay, we're just waiting on a few more people here. Waiting on Odin. Hugh, Hugh, unless you're on the phone, Hugh. And Annie as well, Kurtz. There's Annie. Annie. Has anyone heard from Odin, if he'll be able to make it or not?
Yeah, I heard from him earlier and he was gonna, he's, he'll be here tonight.
Talked to Hugh earlier, he said he should be on, so.
Dan, do you have glasses on?
Uh, yes, I do.
I don't think I've ever seen you with glasses, they look nice.
Um, it's a bit of an eye strain day, so I thought I'd take it easy, usual contact ones where, so.
Okay, it is officially six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. I know that Hugh was, uh, working on joining us. So we'll kind of, we'll go over some of the, uh, logistical pieces. Uh, as per usual, uh, this meeting, or this special meeting, I should say, is being held remotely in accordance with Governor Anzley's orders that have continued up to this point. Uh, so we will maintain and recognize that. Uh, we will be doing our invocation, pledge of allegiance, call to order, roll call, agenda approval like we normally do, and we'll have an opportunity at the end for citizen comments. So if you are a citizen and you're watching this meeting, you will be able to make citizen comments at the end, uh, relative to this topic, uh, of what we're discussing tonight. Uh, we have the pleasure of Ann McFarland joining us, thank you, Ann. If you are, uh, not speaking, I ask that you keep yourself on mute, especially for the citizens that are, uh, watching the meetings. Um, and if you do want to, uh, make a comment or ask a question from a citizen's perspective, uh, please utilize the chat feature on the bottom of the screen, at which point our, uh, Todd Henderson, who is helping us with the meeting, will unmute you. Uh, so if there's no further questions or comments, we'll, uh, get started with the invocation. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to do that for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're having any father, I ask that you be with us this evening and, and covering our agenda. Help us to understand this, so we may move forward with, uh, much better meetings, uh, for the benefit of our citizens. In your son's precious name, I pray, amen.
We'll do a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will officially call this meeting to order. Uh, I'll be doing roll call here in a second, but I did want to recognize some of the staff that are here helping us tonight. As I mentioned, we have Todd Henderson, uh, who is here to make sure our meeting goes smoothly from the IT side. We also have Jen Camp on the call, uh, with, uh, our Parks Department. We have Lisa Keys, Jocelyn Reddell. Uh, we have a couple, uh, citizens here, we have Katie Allen in the room, and myself, Ann Swenson, and DeDarian Morgan, Sergeant with Police Department. Um, so, we'll, uh, get started with the, uh, roll call, and if you can, uh, let me know by, uh, saying that you're here, we'll start out with Mayor Proton Kennedy.
Resident.
Councilmember Kamiskas.
Here.
Councilmember Foyer.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kurtz.
How's it?
Councilmember Langford.
Here.
Councilmember Severs. Couldn't hear you. Todd, can you unmute Severs? I think he tried on his side, but it didn't work. Can you unmute his cellphone?
I marked it on you.
Okay. Did you hit, uh, star six, I think it is, Hugh? Yeah, still nothing? Okay. Oh, there we go.
Nope, how about that now?
All right, there we go, all right.
All right.
Councilmember Severs is on as well. Okay, so I, uh, records show, um, all are in attendance and accounted for, so if we can get an agenda approval.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Severs. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll, uh, get started with workshop discussing, discussion. Uh, this is a meeting that is going to be facilitated by Ann McFarland, uh, going over quite a few different topics. So, uh, Ann, or, so I want to start it out by saying, Ann, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Uh, we appreciate your, uh, expertise and the education process, uh, to help us, uh, run more efficient and fluid process at our, not only our meetings, but in our, uh, government work altogether for our community, so thank you for joining us.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much, it's an honor to be here, and it's a pleasure to see so many familiar faces. I've worked with a number of you before, and I'm delighted to be here again. We're in somewhat different times, and so perhaps reviewing and looking at different aspects of meetings will be helpful. So those of you who've heard me speak before know that, that I believe that Robert's Rules of Order is a terrible book. It's an example of, uh, taking a good thing and keeping on improving it until you wreck it. The original Robert was a lieutenant colonel in the US Army Corps of Engineers, one of his first assignments was on San Juan Island. And when he published, uh, Robert's Rules in 1876, it was a pocket manual, it would literally fit in your pocket. But his heirs, who have ownership of the book, have kept on improving it and have just recently issued the 12th edition, and when I was first encountering Robert in depth as President, newly-elected President of the American Translators Association, I was horrified. I thought, this book is unbelievable, what am I going to do? But our bylaws said, like the bylaws of 90% of the voluntary associations in this country, meetings shall be run according to Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised latest edition. So I kept on reading of it, and I realized in the end that it's a perfect example of the Pareto Principle. You all know that principle, 20% of the people drink 80% of the beer, 20% of your constituents give you 80% of your problems. There is a core to Robert's Rules that we really need, and that's the core that I'm going to be doing my best to share with you today. And as I say, I know a lot of it's familiar, but I hope that, look, taking a fresh look at it will be helpful. So I'm going to share my PowerPoint here with you, which I also sent to you, if you are a note-taking type. I sent it in, uh, SixUp format because it takes so much paper in the three-page note-taking. And you don't need to have that printed out in order to take this workshop, but if you like to have it, you may. I will also send after the meeting, a file of the various papers that I refer to in order to have, let you have some reference material. I used to send it before the session, but I knew things always come up, and then I would have to send a supplement, so I decided it was just easier to send all the reference materials at the end. So, yeah, this is great city council meetings, and as the mayor mentioned, we have quite a set of topics. Some of them take more and some take less, and we'll definitely take a break in the meeting. But we're going to talk about meeting discussion, point of order and appeal, how to do this, motions and amendments briefly, the authority and role of chair members and staff, inappropriate remarks, and efficient meeting, what's the point of rules of order, then the right kind of control, and then we'll take a look at the end of, at the new things that we've covered. So why are we here? My goal tonight is to invigorate you to run effective meetings using four fundamental guidelines. And I use the word invigorate because humans tend to do things the way they've always done them. We tend to run along in a familiar path, and sometimes it takes a little shakeup to look at new and different ways of, of doing things. And I have four outcomes from this workshop, there will be others as well, but my intention is that you'll be able to list four fundamental guidelines, which to my mind make up the heart of Robert's Rules. You'll be able to make a point of order when those guidelines are broken. You'll be able to label five inappropriate remarks, and you'll be able to make motions and amendments. So I do want to quickly say that I am not an attorney. This material is based strictly on the principles and practices of parliamentary procedure. If you get different advice from your attorney, please listen to your attorney, that's very important. So we're going to be in the League of Northwest Dino Cities. It's not entirely realistic, it's a fantasy, but there's some overlap with real life. It's like drawing with crayons, using broad strokes to convey the big picture. And you are going to be the members of the Dynopolis City Council. So here is a map of the League of Northwest Dino Cities, I know it's a little faint, but Dynopolis is way down at the bottom there on Dino Bay, it's the capital city. My late husband and I had a lot of fun developing the 70 cities of this league, each of which has its own pet project that it would like the league to spend money on. So obviously, the first thing you do when you're chairing a meeting is you sit in the chair. We have the two different instances of the word, the chair means both the place from which you preside and the authority that you exercise as chair of the meeting. So you sit in the chair reserved for the person running the meeting, you wrap the gavel lightly one time and announce, this meeting of the Dynopolis City Council is called to order. You ask the clerk to take the role, and you announce that a quorum is present, or not. It is the chair's duty to announce the quorum, it's not the clerk. So the quorum is the minimum number of voting members who must be present for business to be done. And usually, it's a majority, more than half, of the members in office, the members who are actually serving on the council. And quorum is different from votes cast. Quorum is what allows you to take action, but the votes cast are the actions that you take. And if you lose your quorum, you can't do business. And of course, you know that for, uh, city councils, discussion is business. So if you don't have a quorum, you can't just sit there and talk about city business. Local government bodies must not create a walking quorum or a serial meeting. When members of the body talk or email with each other outside of meetings, such that a quorum is discussing the body's business, the Open Public Meetings Act has been violated. I'm sure you know all about this, but I just recently was working with a Parks Commission where the chair said brightly, oh yes, I talk to all our members all the time. And I said, well, if you're talking about city park business, then you're violating the OPMAs if you do that. You can talk to other people as long as the number is less than a quorum. So of course, I'm sure you're all very careful also about your emails. We had a famous case in my home city of Shoreline of people sending emails that amounted to a serial meeting. So the agenda is prepared by the leadership, but it's within the control of the council, subject to notice requirements, of course. And Robert's Rule says that if you follow the standard order of business, you don't need to take a vote to adopt an agenda. But many bodies do vote, it takes a majority vote to adopt and a two-thirds vote to change it later in the meeting. And according to Robert, you don't need to include approval of the agenda or other minor procedural motions in the minutes, but many bodies do, and it's no problem if you do. So here is a simplified standard order of business. Approval of minutes, officers' remarks and reports, committee reports, unfinished business, we don't say old business and then new business, and you of course have an order of business in your council rules. So one very useful way to vote is to use unanimous consent. And it's often good for approving the agenda. The chair asks, are there any changes to the agenda? And if no one speaks up, then your silence means consent. Your silence means that you have voted to approve the agenda. So it's great for minor procedural matters, don't use it for big important things, unless in this time of Zoom meetings, you make a conscious decision to do so. I know some cities are using it when everyone is in agreement, even on substantive motions, but I'm a little queasy about that, I would prefer that it be taken by voice or roll call. So of course, the chair has to know how to do this, the chair cannot say, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. The chair has to pause and then allow people the chance to speak up. And of course, the members have to know that they can say, I have a change, or objection, or something, to speak up. It's kind of counter-cultural, it doesn't feel like you should, but in fact, you should. And if you say, I have a change, or I object, or objection, then the presider knows that everyone doesn't agree and abandons that fast track to go back to the regular method. So a good, great language tip is without objection, or if there is no objection. If the chair says that, the chair is indicating to everybody that they are the final authority, but he or she is also using his authority to move things forward. Under Robert, the chair cannot unilaterally call a recess. But if the chair feels that a recess would be a good idea, the chair can say, if there's no objection, we'll take a 10-minute recess. So now we're going to move on to meeting discussion, point of order, and appeal. And we're going to start off with an exercise of reading a script. Now, um, it's just a very simple little script, and it has six characters, I'm going to be the chair, and I need, I'm hoping that some of you will volunteer to take the roles. All you're going to have to do is read from a PDF that I'm going to put front and center on your screen. So is anybody willing to be the banker?
I'll be the banker.
Okay, I saw Dan's hand first.
Let's do it.
Dan will be the banker, who will be the elderly member? Shane, the mayor, will be the elderly member. Who will be the environmentalist? You have to be a little combative to be the environmentalist, okay? Hugh will be the environmentalist. Who will be a photographer? Okay, Chris for photographer, and who will be a teacher? Odin, you can be a teacher, great. So as we're going through this short little script, watch for these things, watch for making and seconding a motion, rules for discussion, inappropriate remarks, point of order and appeal, and when the chair is out of line. We're going to cover all this in the presentation, but I just found that it's kind of useful to start off with a, uh, dramatic representation of the issue. So here we are, and I'm going to share my screen once I find where it is, hold on here, hold on, okay. This is so annoying, I had it on the other monitor at a recent training and nobody could see it. So I'll, I'll put it back on the other monitor, but then if, if you can't see it, just let me know and I'll try to move it back. Okay, just a moment here. So is that visible? Can you all see the script? Is anybody who can't see? Okay, good. Sounds like somebody's unmuted. So I, I would like those of you who are participating to unmute so that you can respond quickly to what's going on. And notice, in real life, people would have to be recognized first, but we're using these numbers down the left-hand side as a substitute for recognition, they're just to speed things up. Okay, so make sure you're unmuted, and let's, I'll be the chair. There's continuing pressure on our parking spaces in the downtown areas of the city of Dynopolis. Staff has reviewed the matter carefully, as you know, our current rate is $2 per hour. The staff recommends that the new fee be set at $20 per hour, does anyone care to make that motion?
Yeah, I moved that parking fee to be set at $20 per hour.
Second.
Very well. It has been moved and seconded that the parking fee be set at $20 per hour. We will now have discussion on the motion, environmentalist, as the maker of the motion, you have the right to speak first.
Well, I'm a believer in public transportation myself, I think that this increase will lessen congestion and force more people to take buses or walk, it's a good idea for the environment and for our city.
Thank you, further discussion, the chair recognizes the elderly member.
I think this is a terrible idea, we, we've just learned that we have a $10 million surplus. Why would we increase parking fees and burden our residents this way?
Do you know that parking fees in most cities of the league are $15 per hour? We are so far behind the market that it's ridiculous.
Well, that's, that's not a reason to go crazy and lay this burden on our residents. Many elderly dinosaurs are really feeling the pinch, the improvement in the economic situation hasn't touched them.
There's no point being an old softie and begging for sympathy for the down and out. If they had an ounce of gumption, they would have saved up for their old age.
Ouch.
What, what a hard-headed, hard-hearted comment. Someday you might be old and wrinkled and poor yourself, have you no compassion?
All I have to say to you about this is nonsense, applesauce and balderdash.
Point of order.
State your point.
These members are monopolizing this discussion. Under Robert's Rules, no one can speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once.
The point is well-taken, members must speak in turn, thank you, thank you, banker, is there any further discussion?
This is likely to put a crimp on the vitality of our downtown, as a business owner, I'm really concerned about this, I speak against the motion.
I see those arguments, but I think we have to be prudent, I guess on balance, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Honestly, I think you dinosaurs are just living in the past, we ought to be preparing to have driverless cars, not raising the rates on our parking lots, you're just a bunch of has-beens.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
State your point.
That's an insulting remark, according to Robert's Rules of Order, all of us are obligated to speak with our, with courtesy and respect, including the chair.
Oh, the point is well-taken, the chair apologizes for her remarks, is there any further discussion?
In my opinion, this council is clueless, we have our head stuck in the concrete. Given the way the stock market is trending, our surplus could just disappear. I hope everyone will agree to raise those rates.
You know, I've heard better discussions in my daughter's kindergarten class. It's clear that we don't have the sharpest knives in the kitchen drawer here.
Point of order.
State your point.
The members are insulting all of us by those remarks.
The chair will rule that the comments are indeed insulting, members will kindly refrain from such improper statements.
I have to say that I don't think all these rules are a good idea. They're keeping us from expressing our true opinion. You are an out-of-date dinosaur yourself, Madam Chairman.
The chair will rule that the words "out-of-date dinosaur" are insulting and may not be used.
I appeal.
Second.
Very well, the ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded, so the members will decide. The chair has ruled that the words "out-of-date dinosaur" are insulting. All those who believe that this ruling should be sustained, please say aye.
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 All those who believe that the ruling should not be sustained, please say no.
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 The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the ruling of the chair is sustained. Members may not use this term, further discussion?
If we do this, the residents are likely to come and throw eggs at our houses, or even worse, I'm dead against it.
Thank you, further discussion? Hearing none will take the vote, all those in favor of raising the parking fees to $20 per hour, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes, and we will raise the parking fees to $20 per hour. Well, thank you for doing such a brilliant rendition of this little skit here. And, uh, I have to say that a discussion like that should never happen in any of your meetings, and I'm sure that it never does. But just in case, let's look at a few things. And the first is called the principle of equality. All members have equal rights, privileges, and obligations. This sounds perfectly obvious and routine and small-scale, but it's not always carried out in practice. And there's a point that arises from that, which is that discussion in council and committee meetings is not a conversation. It's not a conversation, it's debate, and it has its own rules, and so we get the first of our four fundamental guidelines. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. This is so important, I'm going to have it in red just to match my shirt. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. This is a transformative principle, and for some reason, we don't tend to do it. Councils and committees tend to discuss their affairs in conversational mode. And in conversations, dominant people tend to dominate, and agreeable people tend to let them. So you must have a structure to make sure that everyone has an equal chance to speak, and this is both fair and efficient. Yes, Odin?
Ma'am, what, when you say everybody that wants to speak?
Yes.
Are we confining this to the members?
Oh yes, we're just speaking here about the members of the body. Mm-hmm.
Just to the members?
Yes. We will mention public comment a bit later, but at this point, this whole thing is just about you, it's about your meetings. So when things don't go as they should, and the conversation deteriorates into a hockey match with everybody reaching for the goal, the chair should step in, but if the chair fails to do so, a member can make a point of order. And it's a very important motion. In our system, our Jurassic Parliament system, it's represented by a flying dinosaur. It rears its ugly head, and the chair just bats it out of the sky. So a point of order is a motion claiming that a procedural mistake has been made. Now, according to Robert, it can only be made by a member of the body, by a council member. But we recommend authorizing key staff to do so also, because often they know the rules pretty darn well. And some cities have done this. The public may not raise a point of order, if you have a member of the public standing up in the audience and saying, point of order, that person is out of order. Now, there are two key things that somehow everybody always forgets, so they're really important. The first is that you actually may interrupt a speaker if necessary. You have permission to interrupt somebody to make a point of order, but don't do it lightly, and don't do it often. We'll talk a little bit more about why in a minute. And the second is, it must be timely, you must make that point of order at the time of the offense. If you go on to some other order of business, it's too late, and you have waived your right to make a point of order. So let's have an example of how this works, let me just quickly check my audio, okay, here we go.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well-taken, members may not use this term.
Point.
So you see, it's really very simple, the member says point of order, the chair says state your point, the member explains, and then the chair issues a ruling, either the point is well-taken or the point is not well-taken. So notice that the chair is using the third person to keep things neutral and lessen conflict. It's like the chair is speaking on behalf of the rules of procedure, you're the voice of General Robert. You know, don't say you're out of order, or you made up a mistake, I was at a council meeting. You know, don't say you're out of order, or you made up a mistake. I was at a council meeting once where the chair said to a council member, "John, I think you're off-topic." And that's not a good thing to do, because that immediately personalizes it and makes it a contest between the two people. When in doubt, ask the group. The group can, the chair can always ask the group to decide if a point of order is correct, if it's well taken or not. Now, notice that the chair doesn't have to say a point of order. The chair already has the duty of maintaining order and decorum, so the chair just needs to take appropriate action. So I'm hearing moderate background noise. Could we ask everybody to be sure that you're muted if you're not speaking, just to help me out here? Thank you. So what about this situation? What if this happens? The members are just going around in circles and wasting time with this discussion.
Point of order. The chair must follow the same rules as the rest of us.
Well, the point is well taken. The chair apologizes for getting carried away. So we had that in our little skit. If the chair breaks one of the rules, a member may raise a point of order, and the chair issues a ruling on their own behavior, which seems totally odd, but that's the way that the system works. And of course, in order for this to happen, you have to have a chair who knows that they're supposed to raise a point, respond to a point of order. Now, there's a pitfall. There's a pitfall about point of order that I'd like to mention. You may interrupt to make a point of order, and sometimes you have to, but usually it's not necessary to interrupt, and you should hold back. I worked with one city, and they learned about this, and they immediately took to throwing points of order like little darts at each other all through the meeting. It was terribly disruptive. And in particular, they would do this. A member would say something like, "Well, I don't think we should approve this transportation improvement plan, because it's much more important that we devote our resources to taking care of our homeless problem." And somebody would say, "Point of order! We're not talking about the homeless problem." So I recommend that you don't call a point of order for germaneness, for relevance, unless it's really very, very clear. I mean, if somebody's telling you about their honeymoon in Bolivia, okay, you can say that's not germane. But I would urge you to allow council members to develop their theme and make their point. And if that involves referring to other topics in the course of doing it, they should be allowed to do that. You shouldn't be trying to pull them up short. It really has caused a serious deterioration in this council's relations. So once a point of order has been made, and the chair has ruled, the only allowable form of discussion is to appeal the ruling. It's to appeal the ruling. So appeal, in our view, is the most important motion in all of Robert's rules and the least known. Have any of you ever used an appeal or seen an appeal? So very often, it's not known, but it's really critical. The chair enforces order and decorum, but the group is the final authority. And any two members can appeal a ruling of the chair. And in fact, in your council, one member can appeal. Your rules of order authorize a single member to appeal the ruling of the chair. Now, the exception is, if the ruling is a matter on which there cannot be two reasonable interpretations, like what's in the bylaws, then the ruling cannot be appealed. So let's look at how this goes.
The port was a cesspool of corruption.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term.
Appeal.
Second.
Very well. The ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded. The members will decide the matter. The question is whether the chair's ruling that the words "cesspool of corruption" break our rules of decorum should be sustained. All those who believe it should be sustained, please say aye. All those who believe it should not be sustained, please say no. In this instance, the members voted no, so the ruling of the chair was not sustained. I've put this unhappy figure in just for fun, but in fact, if you lose an appeal, it's better to maintain a neutral face. Try to give the impression that you don't care. Just a little bit of advice there based on sad experience. So this is how you process it. Member A says appeal. In your case, you don't even need a second. The chair says, "The chair's ruling has been appealed. The members will decide. All those who believe the ruling should be sustained, please say aye. Members in favor say aye. All those who believe it should not be sustained, please say no. Members opposed, say no." And then the chair announces the result. Now, the chair has to take care in explaining the vote to the members, because the basic principle is the chair's ruling stands until it's overturned. So the question being voted on is, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? Seems kind of backwards. It seems like if you agree with the person who's making the appeal, you should vote yes. But actually, if you agree with that person, you should vote no, because the assumption is that the chair's ruling will stand unless it's overturned. So it's kind of confusing. It takes a negative vote for the appeal to win. A majority vote in favor of sustaining the chair's ruling, or a tie, means that the chair's ruling stands. And the chair may vote on the appeal. So that's something sometimes people don't know. So at point of order, an appeal are processed immediately. No other business can take place until they're dealt with. And points of order and appeals don't count against a member's turn to speak and debate. It's just a whole separate thing, and it doesn't affect your standing as far as discussing the issue at hand. Points of order, point of order cannot be debated, and appeals pertaining to language and decorum cannot be debated. When an appeal can be debated, the process is different from anything else in Robert's rules. So if you all get really sophisticated and have debatable appeals, you'll want to study up, especially you, Mr. Mayor, on how that process works. So we believe, yes, Dan?
Question. To clarify, a point of order, it cannot be debated on appeal. And the reference there is that the chair must immediately take a vote with no additional discussion.
Almost.
Okay.
Let me go back here. Point of order cannot be debated. Appeals pertaining to language and decorum cannot be debated. But if it's something else, like whether a topic is germane or something, then you can debate it.
Okay.
So that's, that's the difference. It's a, it's a little tricksy here, but thank you for the question. So we believe that point of order and appeal are the absolute heart of democracy. They are the way that the group is the final authority, and that you can't have a tinpot dictator running things the way that she likes. And I will include this paper in the reference materials that I'm gonna send you after our session. Not immediately after, but in a day or two. So let's look at how to do this. So we recommend these points. Seek recognition before speaking. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. No sidebar conversations or whispering. No interrupting. And two optional rules. One is to speak to the chair, not to each other. And one is that debate must be either for or against. And I've found that councils, some of them like those two optionals, and some of them don't. So seeking recognition, this is critical. This is so important. Members must seek recognition from the presider before speaking. I put it in red, because I want to burn it onto your eyeballs. You raise your hand, and you wait to speak until the presider, the chair, the mayor calls your name, nods at you, or gives some other sign that you have permission to speak. And of course, obviously, online, you can use the raise hand function, or raise your physical hand, whatever it is that you're doing in your meetings. When you have not been recognized, you have a duty to remain silent. When you have not been recognized, you may not speak. I had one case, I watched a city council meeting. It was so distressing, I couldn't sleep that night. There was a member who kept arguing back to the chair, to the mayor. And he thought that he was correct about Robert, and he was wildly wrong. So he not only was breaking the rules himself, he was also breaking them on behalf of an erroneous interpretation of Robert's rules. Fortunately, they did have a training, so I was able to point it out. Now, the exception obviously is a point of order. So this paper, Rights and Responsibilities of the Member, written by a colleague of mine, is a great listing, and I'm gonna include that for you as well. So the chair can keep track of who has spoken and who wishes to speak using a chart. The chair can empower the vice chair or the mayor pro tem to do this. It's good training for them. Or you can use the round robin. So I love the round robin. The chair goes around the table, asking each person in turn for their opinion. People may pass. It's important to have a pencil in hand to jot down points or questions for when your turn arrives. It's also very important that the chair must wait their turn. Sometimes on the round robin, the chair answers each person back, which gives them, you know, seven times to speak instead of one. And we like to follow this rule for questions and answers in discussions with staff. You don't want any two people to hijack the meeting. Sometimes one council member goes back and forth with a staff member for 10 or 15 minutes, and we don't think that's a good idea. We think you should have procedures in place so that doesn't happen. So here's an example of a speaking chart. You might be using something like this already, but we give free permission for you to modify it and have it handy. And every time somebody speaks, you just check them off. And then you can see immediately who's had a turn and who is still waiting. So it's really very handy. No interrupting. You know, in real life, we interrupt each other all the time. But when a member has the floor, they have the right to speak until they've completed their comments. And Robert even says, and I love this, "The chair may not interrupt a member just because the chair knows more about the subject than the member." So I think it's great that that's an actual rule. And again, the exception is a point of order when essential. Now, speaking to the chair is optional, but it really helps depersonalize issues. If, you know, member X has said something that you're not sure about, you turn to the mayor and you say, "Mr. Mayor, would it be possible for member X to clarify that?" And then the mayor turns to member X. And so it prevents speaking directly to each other, because when people speak directly to each other, it tends to deteriorate into one of those conversations, and discussion goes kind of down the rabbit hole. So this is something I often recommend that councils try it for a couple of months, and just see whether they like it or not. So this is a sign from the Seattle Yacht Club. I was not there as a member, but I happened to see it. And we recommend that groups adopt a policy of no electronic devices during the meeting. Phone snubbing, where you're looking at your phone instead of at your colleagues, is rude to others, and it weakens the coherence, the body's cohesion and ability to work well together. When members are distracted, they're not attending to the work of the body, which wastes everyone's time. And absolutely no tweeting or posting on social media during meetings, and absolutely no tweeting to each other or post, texting to each other during meetings. That's a big violation of the OPMA. So even though it seems like it goes against the tide, you can do this. I also want to say that Jurassic Parliament recognizes that sometimes there's benefit in the conversational style or informal discussion. It provides a sparky flow of ideas that can be beneficial. It can be useful in committee meetings or work sessions. But we recommend that you not make this your ordinary or default style of conversation. So we have prepared the sample discussion guidelines for local governments, and you are perfectly free to adapt them in any way that might work for you. We have them in Word format if you want. And again, I'll include them in the reference materials. So I want to urge you, council members, these are some thoughts for you. Don't try to convince your colleagues that you are right. Don't answer them back, or question what they said, or rephrase what they said. Don't argue with them. Just state your own position as clearly and effectively as you can. That's the way to have really powerful discussion at meetings when you can't have a conversation. So I'll pause here and ask if anybody has any questions or thoughts about these various points? Does anybody want to make a comment, or? Yes, Katie?
I have a question. So we're entering the budget season, and this is a hypothetical, but our finance director's gonna make a presentation on the budget. He's gonna probably go through the org chart, the numbers, the revenue, the expenditures, and everything. What is the best way and most efficient and productive way for our council to engage and interact with specific questions that they have on the budget? How would you recommend that they do that? So kind of where I wanted to ask the question is, when there's a staff presentation and the council has questions, what's the best way for that interaction to occur?
So the best way, in my view, is a method called the exploratory round robin. I didn't put it in these slides, but I will describe it to you. You, the, the, the staff member makes the presentation, and then you collect all the questions and comments. Everybody has a chance to say what their question or comment is, and you collect it on a whiteboard or on a screen that people can see. And you don't do it with their name attached. You just collect all the questions, and then you address the answers. So getting everybody's concerns out on the table ahead of time, before anybody starts any discussion or anything, or clarifying or answering, lets you see where the issues are, and whether they cluster in a certain way or not. And again, we have a paper on that, so I will, I will send it to you. It's a wonderful method for discussing complex issues.
What's the name of it again?
It's called exploratory round robin. Exploratory, it's on the website, and I'll also put it in the reference material. In fact, let me make a note to do that. It's something that we developed that combines certain consensus methods and Robert, and we developed it for Seattle Children's Research Institute, and they found it very powerful. Very powerful. So thanks for the question. Other thoughts? Yes, Annie?
I have a question. So if I am recognized by the mayor to, and I have a question or a comment, and say I have a question for Katie, and Katie is, you know, giving me an answer, but then I have another question for her, do I need to be re-recognized? Or is that part of my floor time to engage in further questions from my original question? Does that make sense?
Sure. Well, Robert doesn't have rules about that. There are many aspects of, of council meetings that Robert doesn't address. My kind of rule of thumb is that a council member gets two questions. You get a question and a follow-up. But if you have more, then we should give someone else a chance, and then maybe come back to you at the end. But oftentimes, there is a follow-up question, and I think it's perfectly reasonable to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. How about the rest of you? So nice when I can see everybody. When I give webinars, I don't get to do that. Okay, well, you can also ask your questions later if they occur to you. Now, we're gonna take a look at motions. We'll take about 10 or 15 minutes on motions, then we'll take a little break. So in parliamentary procedure, a main motion is the usual and customary way to start the action of discussion and decision-making. And for small boards like you, up to about 12 people, it's okay to have a discussion before a motion is moved. But Jurassic Parliament recommends moving the motion before discussing it whenever possible. So in our system, our Jurassic system, we use a T-Rex, a Tyrannosaurus Rex, to stand for the main motion. So we recommend this sequence. The staff prevents the proposal in writing and answers any question. Each council member may ask one or two questions, and then the next member has a turn. The motion is moved and seconded. The council members discuss the motion and may amend it. That's when amendments come in. And then the members vote on the motion. So is that kind of roughly what you do? Phil, yes?
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt your question. I'd like to ask, give me an example of when it's okay to have a discussion before a motion?
Well, in some cities, if they, if the staff presents a motion to install a new stoplight at Pine and Green, the council members will want to talk about it before they move it. And the reason is, they feel emotionally as if moving it means that in some way they approve it. Now, that's wrong. They, they have a mistaken idea about what Robert's rule says, but that's what they like, and because they're a small board, they can do that. So they will talk about this intersection, and whether there's been a lot of crashes there, and what the other intersections in the city are that might need it more. And then somebody will finally say, "Okay, I move that we install a traffic light at Pine and Green." And then at that stage, it's a formal motion. It needs a second, and they're discussing it and amending it. Does that answer the question?
I understand somebody else does it that way, but in my mind, you're, you're putting the discussion before the motion. Maybe the council has no desire to even talk about the motion. So why would you have discussion before the motion?
Phil, you're my man. Will you go to that city and tell them? Explain it to them. They're really doing it wrong. No, you're, you're right. You're right. But I just want you to know that, that these, there are these special rules for small But I just want you to know that, that these, there are these special rules for small boards and Robert says you can do it. I think it's a mistake. And I think oftentimes what happens is they get all kind of muddled up and they're really, what they're actually doing is debating the motion itself, but they don't know it. It's not a council that's very effective in its functioning. So I can't name it, of course.
You're not suggesting that we practice that. You're just saying other-
I'm just saying it's allowed.
Okay.
But I recommend what's here. Staff presents a proposal and answers any questions. You separate the question period from the discussion period. So questions first, then move in second, then discussion and amendment.
Thank you.
Katie?
So sometimes we bring things forward from staff and for discussion and a motion, but the council's not ready to make a decision and they want more time to discuss it or deliberate or to bring it back. Can you help our council understand how to table it? What's the best way to say, to table it and say, you know, we really need more time to think about what you're proposing?
So that's not tabling. That's not tabling. Under Robert's rules, to take, and actually I have a, I have a slide on table. If you all will stop for a minute. I tried a new thing with this, with this PowerPoint of putting some reserved slides at the end so that if questions came up, I could address them. So let me go to that. Hold on just a second here because it'll be handy to see it. It'll be handy to see it. Okay, can everybody see that? Motion to table. Is it clear? So motion to table, set something aside for a short while to deal with more urgent business. Once a motion has been laid on the table, it hovers there until it's taken from the table. If it's not taken from the table at this meeting or the next meeting, it falls to the ground. And you can't table something until the next meeting, but you can use the motion to postpone until the next meeting. And you can't use table to kill something either. So the staff, the council member can move to refer this back to staff for further study and research to bring it back at a suitable time. You know, you don't have to, again, Robert here, not thinking about city councils, says that you can only postpone to the next meeting. Well, I think that's too limited. I think it would be fine for you to say, we'd like the staff to research this and bring it back when it's ready or bring it back in six weeks or bring it back in three weeks or whatever. So does that clarify that? So it's a very common misunderstanding about, about table. So I'm going to go back to where I was. Other questions? Anybody have any other questions for, for me? No hands? Okay, so we're going to go back to motions then in just a minute as soon as I resume my place. Maybe I should actually have two, two issues of it up so I could get you what we need. Okay, table, here we go. There. Coming right back. And then we're going to share it. Okay, so the staff presents a proposal in writing, answers any questions, questions, moved and seconded, discussion, amendment, vote. So a main motion should be in writing if at all possible. Mostly you're going to have them in writing. They're going to be recommended by the staff. But if somebody's making something up on the spot, they should write it down and you can put it on the screen. Or if you're in person, you can use these three-part motion forms where the chair gets one copy, the clerk gets one copy and the person who made the motion gets a copy. I've actually been at meetings where once the vote was taken, somebody says, what did we just approve? And nobody knows because it wasn't written down. A main motion should be clear and unambiguous. Don't say, I move what he just said. Don't say, so moved. It should be phrased in the grammatical positive. Don't put not into your motion. It has to comply with the bylaws and the procedural law of the land and you can only have one main motion at a time. So if you're having a motion to install a new traffic light at Pine and Green and somebody says, oh, I think that's a mistake. I move that we study all the traffic lights in the city. They can't do that. That motion has to go away until we've dealt with this one and then we can take another one. This is a part of Robert's idea of one thing at a time. So all you have to say is, I move that. All you have to say is, I move that. Don't say, I would like to motion that or anything elaborate. And the member must be clear. The member has the responsibility of formulating the motion. Don't mix up your ideas about the subject with the motion itself. Save those for debate. Something like this should not happen. I've been noticing that the number of wild cats is increasing in our city and they're getting stomped on by bigger dinosaurs. It's important that we do something to protect them, so I think allowing caddios would be great. This fits in with our mandate to serve all species and it will make the little kitties safer. That is a way to give your clerk a time in the mental asylum. Don't do it. State the exact motion clearly. I move that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. You want to state just nice and clean what it is. And you can request a moment to write it down. May I have a few minutes to write this motion down? The chair can also request that the motion be written. Then somebody says, second the motion. Now you second a motion to show that you would like to talk about it. You don't have to be recognized. You just call out second and it's even okay to second a motion you disagree with if you want to explain why it's a bad idea. If there's no second, the chair says, there being no second, the motion will not be considered and moves immediately to the next item of business. Now notice that under Robert's rules, you can't speak against your own motion. If discussion has changed your mind, you should request permission to withdraw the motion. But the maker can vote against their own motion. That's allowed. So there are eight steps to process a motion. And if you printed out that handout, you've got a blank sheet of paper where you can fill them in. If you didn't, no worries. Yes, Phil?
Question on the withdraw the motion. Does the person that seconded it, seconded the motion, need to agree?
Not at all, not at all. But it's the body that needs to agree. You can't say, I'm taking my marbles and going home. The person says, I request permission to withdraw my motion. And usually it's handled by unanimous consent. Usually the chair says, is there any objection? But if somebody objects, then you take a vote on whether to allow the member to withdraw the motion or not. So here are the eight steps to process a motion. The member makes the motion. Another member seconds it. The chair states the motion. The members debate and/or amend the motion. The chair restates the motion and calls for the vote. The members vote on the motion. The chair states the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails and what happens next as a result of the vote. And then the chair states the next item of business. And I was very happy to see in your rules of procedure, which are very good, by the way, this number three, that the chair states the motion before debate begins because that often doesn't happen. And the chair really needs to say it for two reasons. One is so that everybody knows exactly what is being considered. And the other is the way the chair states it is the official text of the motion. So sometimes chairs have a tendency to kind of massage a motion, you know, and improve it, make it a little bit more like what they like. And if they do that, you can speak up and say, point of order, that's not what I said and make sure that they get it as it is. So, so here's our main motion. Residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. So we've got our T-Rex here and we start the discussion. The general contractor says, I feel that caddios will allow our dear feline friends to experience the outdoors without getting hurt or endangering other wildlife. Here's an example of a cute little caddio. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this motion. So he presents people with this photograph. And then we have discussion. The photographer says, I'm in favor. My cousin has built a caddio and her little pet Fuzzy is completely at home in it as you can see from this picture. So here's Fuzzy, you know, just loving her little caddio. And then the architect says, I think this is a terrible idea. Caddios are intrusive and will ruin the look of our city. Here's an example I saw when I visited Dino Dome last week. We don't want this kind of ugly building in beautiful Dynopolis. And so he shows everybody this photograph and complains that he thinks that they're a bad idea. So when it seems that discussion is finished, the chair asks, is there any further discussion or are you ready to vote? And then if no one speaks up, takes the vote. That's kind of a rhetorical question because in a small board, there's no limit on the number of times people can speak. And notice that this is different from the traditional language recommended by Robert's rules. So the chair repeats the motion. The chair says, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. The chair announces the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails and what will happen next as a result of the vote. And then the chair announces the next item of business. So the ayes have it, the motion passes and residents will be authorized to build caddios or the noes have it, the motion fails and we will not implement this proposal. Now notice that on a voice vote, the chair must call for the negative vote, even if it seems perfectly obvious that the motion is unanimous. On a voice vote, you have to do it. So any questions so far on this? Okay, so we are now arriving at a wonderful feature of parliamentary procedure called stand at ease. Stand at ease is not a formal recess, but it's a chance where you can chat with your neighbor or fill up your coffee cup. And so we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. We'll resume at 7:10. So you're free to turn your video off and stretch or whatever.
Some people stay on the line. Pretty much. In a car?
No.
Oh.
My daughter is the car.
Like your wife's here. Penalty Sean on here?
No, he had a conflict. Then watch the recorded one and then check in with me tomorrow. He let me know tonight.
So bring a sick bag?
About three presentations, workshop items, a couple of workshops. What's actually? Well, actually, that kid especially.
We have a declaration to read that day too.
Yeah, proclamation.
Proclamation, yeah. Yep.
I guess I'm still focused on. Peter Cage, I kind of knew him like. Two secondary sessions, I don't know. I've been the guest. My closest to town, dead on.
It is. Everyone's gonna be not watching their phones.
Do you think, well, no.
No. I bet it'll have minimum.
Philadelphia is smaller than hard.
Oh, yeah. All that.
But. That was a rest.
I mean. Have shared part for chair thing today.
Really?
Oh, actually, the local one. Really?
Where does that?
What's that?
Where does that?
I think I'm not sure. This is the train. I like it, Phil.
Two minute warning.
He, he's, he's gonna be our two minute warning guy. One minute, I like it.
It's upside down.
It's upside down, Phil. There you go. I like, I like it, Phil. Maybe I should start doing that.
Very creative, very creative. Sometimes people have trouble getting the mayor's attention for point of order. I recommend this.
There you go.
Same principle.
I'm, I'm usually pretty good about watching people's hands.
Great, great.
I try it, I try anyway.
I think we've done better at taking turns now that we've been in this format because we're never quite sure when somebody's ready to speak.
Well, definitely Zoom has had some advantages, but in other ways, I think it's been a problem. One thing is, a lot of times people are less filtered. So, okay, so I have 7:10, let's resume. So, um, one of the fundamental guidelines that we've talked about in Robert's Rules is one thing at a time. This is the, of, of the third of the guidelines that we've had. We're discussing our proposal to build, to allow people to have cattios, and somebody wants to amend it. And so then they're going to offer an amendment, and we will just deal with that amendment. So again, in our system, a diametridon stands for amendment. That's the dinosaur that we, that we use for that purpose. If I can get a grid view back of you all. This just really is. Boom, there, there we go. Okay, so you amend a motion to improve it, unless you're the US Congress, but we're not going to go there. And the amendment applies to the main motion. And the amendment must be germane, which is a jargon term meaning relevant. Anyone can move to amend, even the person who made the motion. You might look a little foolish if you make a motion and then three minutes later move an amendment, but there's no prohibition against it. So somebody could say, I move that we amend the motion by adding the words, provided that the plan for each catio is approved by the design review board. So if it's adopted, it will read, residents will be authorized to build cattios in their private yards, provided that the plan for each catio is approved by the design review board. So there are four different ways to amend. You can add or insert words. We're doing that in this case, we're adding them at the end. You could strike out words. You could strike out words and insert words in their place. Or you can substitute, which is a little tricky. We tell people, don't try this at home. So the amendment is processed using that same eight steps that we just saw for a main motion. So it's really handy to learn those because then you have a ready tool for a number of other motions as well. The challenge is, we vote on amendments before we vote on the main motion. And I know you know this, but I just have to bring it up. It's in order to make the main motion as good as possible. The Robert term is to perfect the motion. So the amendment blocks the main motion. You've got your main motion here, and now you've got your amendment, and you can't do anything at all with this guy until we've resolved this guy. And so we're going to have discussion, debate, and eventually we're going to vote on the amendment. And if it passes, it becomes a part of the main motion. People sometimes get confused and don't realize that after voting on the amendment, the process continues. And once the fate of the amendment has been decided, debate continues on the main motion. And more amendments are possible. Yes, Dan?
Is there any utility in the word friendly when talking about an amendment?
We will get there, thank you. We'll come to that in just a moment. So once you've dealt with one amendment, you may have others. We can have a different amendment, provided that they apply to a different aspect of the main motion. So if you have this one here, you could say, to begin in 2022, and that would be another amendment. And again, if it passes, it becomes a part of the main motion. So it takes special actions, reconsideration, to go back and change something we've already amended. And after all amendments have been processed, the body still must vote on the amended main motion. Now, when an amendment has been proposed, it's called a primary amendment. And it's also possible to amend the amendment, terrifying words, which is called a secondary amendment. So here we go. Here's our amendment, here's our primary amendment, and here's our teeny little secondary amendment. And the secondary is processed just like the main motion, except that no further amendments are possible. No tertiary amendments. Once we've gone this far, that's the farthest that we can go. So here's our primary amendment, diametridon. Here's our secondary amendment, tiny diametridon. And somebody could say this, I move that we amend the amendment by striking the words "design review board" and inserting the words "a licensed architect." So they're proposing to amend the amendment. And if adopted, the amendment will read, provided that the plan for each catio is approved by a licensed architect. So that's the amendment here that we're discussing. And the secondary amendment blocks the primary amendment. We can't do anything with this guy until we resolve this guy. So I, I hope that the size differential makes it a little bit clearer about how it works. So you discuss and vote on the secondary amendment. Then you discuss and vote on the primary amendment. And then you discuss and vote on the main motion as amended, if indeed it was amended. Now, if these guys failed, then you're just back to your main motion. So is that clear? Clear as mud? Yeah? Yes, Shane?
Uh, one of the topics we've run into in the past, if we wanted to amend a motion, uh, is that the original individual that made that motion has to amend it. So if there's discussion, and that, so you're negatory, anybody can.
Anybody can offer it. Anybody can offer it. Because. Of the, thanks for checking, but remember those three steps? Member makes the motion, seconds it, and then the chair states the motion. Once the chair has stated the motion, it belongs to everybody. It doesn't belong to the maker anymore. And that's where the question of the friendly amendment comes up. People often process friendly amendment the wrong way. Don't turn to the maker and seconder to ask if they accept the amendment. This gives them improper power. You handle it the same as any other amendment. You ask, is there a second? And go on from there. Because once a motion has been stated by the chair, the maker and seconder have the same rights as any other member. So I love the question about utility. The utility of the term is that the person who's offering it thinks that it will make the amendment, the, the motion more likely to pass. That's, that's the idea. But the way it's processed is as described on this slide. Further question about that? Yes, Dan?
So just to rephrase that, friendly or adversarial doesn't matter. It's an amendment, work with it.
That's right. And I actually was at a meeting once where a member said, I'm going to offer a friendly amendment, and if you won't accept it, I'll offer a hostile amendment. And it was all totally irrelevant. It was just somebody completely confused. Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. And by the way, of course, another way to offer a friendly amendment, if it is perhaps a minor thing, is by unanimous consent. The chair could say, is there any objection to accepting this amendment? That's fine too. So either ask for a second and process it in the usual way, or use unanimous consent. But what you don't do is you don't turn to the maker. Any?
Can I go back to, um, the amendments to motions, the primary and secondary amendment? So I just want to, do I understand then that if, if I make a motion and someone makes an amendment, and that amendment is accepted, vote approved?
Right.
Someone else makes another amendment? It's an amendment to my amendment and not amendment to my motion?
Well, it depends.
Okay.
So in this example, we have our main motion, cattios. We have a primary amendment approved by the design review board. And then somebody offers a secondary amendment to the primary amendment, namely, strike "design review board," insert "licensed architect."
So if I made a motion about the cattios.
Yes.
And someone made a motion about the, um, the design review board.
Yes.
And that got approved.
Yes.
Then that would be an amendment. That would be an amendment, amended motion.
Right.
And then if someone wanted to amend something else, they'd be amending my motion and not the amendment.
Correct. Perfect. You've got it exactly. That's exactly right. Yes. It's complicated. I think amendments are one of the most challenging aspects. Yes, Phil?
Um, at some point in, during this, this section of your presentation, uh, maybe help me understand a little bit better the reasons for amendment. As I read this slide, is to add or insert words, strike out words, or the combination of both? And then the last one says substitute. Can you shed a little more light on what substitute means?
Sure. Substitute amendment takes the whole body of the motion and puts in new words. It's like, it's like striking out the whole paragraph and putting a new paragraph in. And it has some very peculiar rules under Robert as to how it's processed, which is why we don't recommend it.
So at, at some point in the conversation, does it make better sense to just shoot down the main motion and start over?
Exactly. Brilliant, brilliant answer. That's exactly right. Or withdraw it, ask permission to withdraw it. When you start getting into substitution, it really gets tied up in knots.
Well, then only the motion maker can withdraw, is that correct?
No, we, yes, only the motion maker can ask permission to withdraw, yes. But, but there, there is, there is a wonderful and a peculiar motion in Robert called postpone indefinitely. Postpone indefinitely. Say, say you've realized that this motion is not going anywhere, and it's not what you want to do. You can move to postpone it indefinitely. And what it really means is, get rid of it for this meeting. It just defeats it for this meeting. But you could bring it up again at a future meeting. It's a very odd name because it seems like it's more final than it is. Yes, Shane?
Uh, just kind of more of a, a comment that you might be able to reinforce. So if somebody makes a motion, and it's seconded, and we have discussion, kind of that round robin style. Um, and one of the council members doesn't have anything that pops into their head, so we pass on to the next one. We get through the rest of them for that round robin, comment period, or question period, discussion period. Um, you can always still go back to that person that said I passed.
Absolutely. And I recommend.
I just want to make sure that, yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone understood that so they still have the ability to speak even if, though they may not have something right at that second.
Yes.
Another council member's comments might trigger a thought in their head.
That's a great point. It's a great point. So we strongly recommend that you say at the end, you know, did anyone who passed wish to speak now? And you can have a second round robin. Or you could just go to people raising their hands. Maybe the first round kind of fleshed it out. But a couple of people, two people have comments or something. You can play it by ear.
Yeah.
Okay, are we doing all right here on these? All right, so let's go pass friendly amendment then. And go to call the question. Now, do you ever have call the question? Does anybody call the question in your meetings? Okay, so that also is often misunderstood. It's a motion requesting that we stop debate and vote now, and it requires a second, but it can't be debated. Thank goodness, we can't debate whether to stop debate. And it can't be amended, and it takes a two-thirds vote to pass. And once it's approved, no more discussion is allowed. So we use triceratops to stand for call the question in the Robert's Rule system. Notice that a two-thirds vote means at least two-thirds of the voting members. It's a very different type from a majority. A majority is more than, but a two-thirds vote is at least. And Robert specifies two-thirds when members' rights are limited or extended. So if you have all seven council members participating in a meeting and they're all voting, what is two-thirds of them? Anybody want to show me hands? How many votes? Yeah, it's five, it's five, you've got it. You all know that. You're not tempted to say four. So here's how you process call the question. I call the question second. The question has been called, so we will vote immediately on whether to end debate and vote on the pending motion, which is, you have to say what it is. All those in favor of stopping debate right now, please raise your right hand. Sorry about that. All, thank you, hands down. All opposed, please raise your right hand. There are two-thirds in favor of ending debates, we will vote immediately, or there are not two-thirds in favor, so discussion will continue. So I'm not a big fan of call the, call the question in small boards. I think that it's better to just let people have their turn, as long as you're following the rule that no one can speak a second time. And in, in one of our cities in the Puget Sound area recently, they had a big split, five to two split on the council, and a member of the majority introduced a motion, which was seconded and stated by the chair. And then they immediately called the question and passed call the question. So the two minority members never had a chance to say a word. And I think that's terrible. I actually wrote a blog post about it because I was so annoyed. And in fact, some councils adopt a rule that you may not call the question until everyone has had at least one chance to speak. And I think that's a very sensible rule myself. But if it's not an issue with you, it's okay. Dan?
Uh, call the question, is that referring to the motion or could potentially be for the amendment?
Could be either, could be.
That's what I want to make sure.
Yeah, so it has a technical name, which is proofed a previous question, which comes from the 18th century. And so I was hoping in the new edition, they'd change the name of that, but they didn't. But, but it really, uh, question refers to the motion that we're debating. And so call the question has kind of a peculiar title. Yes, Mike?
Ann, thank you. Uh, great information so far. Call the question, I'm really glad to hear what your, your opinion is on that. I was on a board some years back with a lot of members, and there was one member that used this as a hammer almost, and everybody else. Because everybody wanted to have an opportunity to speak, this individual would suddenly say, I call the question. And it really stopped everything. And that one item caused more conflict on that board than anything else.
Well, it sounds as though the board didn't understand the correct way to use that motion.
Absolutely.
Which happens, you know, somebody says, I call the question, and the chair says, okay, we have to vote now.
Right.
It's just so undemocratic, it just kills me. Katie?
Sometimes discussions will come up, and the council, and, and I don't know the answer to this, Ann, but our council will want to take a motion for something that is not on the agenda. Can you help us understand how to process that?
So I.
What do you recommend? So let's say during a workshop, I'm sorry, mayor, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I said, during a workshop, there'll be a discussion about a project, say, and it's not on the agenda at 7 o'clock. But then the council really is ready to move on it because they have all the information they, they need to make a decision, but that decision isn't, isn't on the agenda. So we're confused a little bit here on how to process those topics that come up during a 6 o'clock workshop. those topics that come up during a six o'clock workshop that aren't on the agenda for the seven o'clock council meeting. And I don't know what the answer is on, are council taking action in those circumstances, on something that's not on the agenda?
Well, as I've said, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is council can't do that. You have to notice every action that you're going to be taking. And so if you have something for marked for consideration at a work session, and it says very clearly in your rules, no final disposition will be taken, then you can't just slide greatly into your council meeting and take it up. You have to have it at the following meeting. Now, I think you relatively infrequently, don't you? Some councils, you meet twice a month, is that right? So that could, that can lead to kind of long gaps between meetings. You might want to think about having a work session maybe once a month that would be on a different night than a council meeting. To be prepping, you know, to be processing things. But my understanding is, it's, it's not true for special districts, interestingly enough. But I believe that for city councils, if you haven't put it on your agenda for the public to know that you're going to take it up, you can't. Phil?
Yeah, regarding this topic, does it make any difference if the workshop agenda has been published right along with the general meeting? Because we have a workshop one hour before the general meeting.
No, if you take a topic up at a workshop meeting, that's not the same as taking it up at a council meeting. And I understand you can't. You can check with MRSC, you know, they'll give you a better, more authoritative position on that. Yes? I think you're muted, I can't hear you.
Correct. Thank you, you were right, I was muted. If you, we take up a, a discussion in the workshop, and we want to move on it, what's preventing us from adding it to the agenda, making an amendment to the agenda at the regular meeting and taking it up?
Twenty-four hours' notice.
There's no, what, what is the requirement for 24-hour notice of everything that the council is going to talk about?
Well, not talk about, but maybe, but maybe talk about. I, I'm not an expert here, but go to MRSC's website and check their book on the Open Public Meetings Act. They have both a big, huge book on it, and they have, you know, distilled one-pagers that will tell you. But my understanding is that if the council is going to take action, you must give the public at least 24 hours' notice. It has to be posted on your website, it has to be distributed.
Right. I think what has escaped this discussion is, is that our workshops are noticed publicly.
But I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but a workshop is one thing. A council meeting is another thing. And if you, if you notice item A will be discussed at this workshop, you are not entitled to take action on it, item A, at the council meeting unless it was noticed. That's my, my, I'm, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not with MRSC. And if you prove me wrong, let me know, I'll be glad to know. But it seems to me that that is really important distinction. I'll take Mike's comment, and then I would like to move on if we can. Mike?
Actually, not a comment, a question. A great question, because this has caused some challenges. For example, we're in, our rules are instructed, we don't, in a workshop, we're not making a decision. But yet we do it all the time. And where I say, I feel we do it all the time, is staff will give us something we're talking about, and what they ask us, we're looking for direction from council. We would like, are you comfortable with us moving forward with this? Me, that's a-
Yeah, but that's fine. It's not, um, it's not, it's not that no decisions will be made. The phrasing is, let's see. Let's find that phrasing.
Phrasing is, is not expected.
"All discussions and conclusions thereon shall not constitute binding actions of the council." Shall not constitute binding actions of the council. Now, you might talk with your attorney, maybe that's a little, a little unclear. But what I also have seen in many city council rules is the council shall not take final action at a workshop. But it's perfectly fine to tell the staff to do something at a workshop. It's perfectly fine. And I have had that confusion arise in other instances. One city said to me, oh, we can't vote at a workshop. Well, you can vote to say, we want to study this more. That's perfectly fine. Yes?
I understand what you're saying, is that we want to study this more. But what if, if staff says, we would like directions to move ahead on this action?
I think that's, that's fine, well, I mean, I, I can't, I'd have to see it specifically to say. But, but you're not going to vote to approve the action until they come back to you in a regular meeting. They say, we, we think we want to do this, is the council good with us moving on it? That's fine. But the vote to approve it won't be taken until the meeting.
That's where we're have to work on that subject.
Okay, well, if I can be of assistance, let me know. If you find out something different from what I'm saying, let me know. But in my mind, it's pretty clear that a workshop involves the staff and the council together collectively, setting a direction. And they don't reach the destination until they vote at the meeting. Yes, Phil?
No, just a follow-up thought. So if we have a topic, a specific topic for our workshop discussion called, I'm looking to look at our last meeting, for example, capital facilities plan. If we include a top agenda item on our, on our regular session council meeting, then we can take action.
Yeah, sure. Sure, that'd be fine. So the workshop meeting, this discussion of capital facilities plan, the agenda item is, take action on capital facilities plan per discussion. That would be fine.
There may or may not be any discussion at all.
Yeah, it could, it could just be a vote. Although, again, there's a question of, of maybe giving the public the chance to comment. Okay, so if, again, if there's a way that I could assist with this, if it's not clear, I'd be glad to try. And if you find out something more, let me know, because I certainly don't have all the answers.
Thank you.
So I'd like to look now at the authority and role of the chair, members, and staff. So I want to mention, as I have, that Robert has different rules for small boards, up to about 12 people. In a small board, the chair may make motions, discuss, and vote unless law, regulations, or bylaws say otherwise. And you have something very unusual in your council rules of procedure. I've never seen it. Where it says that the elected mayor, you have an elected mayor, right? Is that correct? That he may take part in discussion and make motions and vote, except as limited by law. Now, of course, the law limits the mayor to voting only in cases of a tie among the council members in matters that do not include three different things. But I've never seen, I've never seen a council rules of procedure that say the mayor can make motions. It is customary in Washington State for the mayor, an elected mayor, to take part in discussion. Even though he's technically not part of the council, it is customary. But the part about making motions and seconding motions, never seen that. So it's always interesting, a new version for my library. So we recommend that the chair exercise restraint by speaking and voting last and refrain from making motions. We don't want the chair making motions, if at all possible. The chair can say, would any member care to move that? If the chair has an interest in something, the chair can say that. So this is the paper about small board rules, which I will send you, explains the difference. And here is the, the latest version, the 12th edition. And I'm happy to tell you that it's mostly the same as the 11th edition. The two versions are very, very similar. There are no major changes. But of course, you have in your rules, current edition. So you're now bound by the 12th edition. So I definitely recommend getting yourself a copy. And this spiral bound is so much easier to work with. The only place you can get it is the National Association of Parliamentarians. And I think in some ways, the new edition is an improvement. So I want to distinguish here between two types of organizations. One is shaped like a triangle or a pyramid. And at the top, you've got the boss who's in charge. And the boss recruits people to do the work of the organization, tells them how to do it, and if they do it badly, fires them. One feature of an organization like this is that it has status or rank. And people who are near the top are higher in status than people who are down below. I don't think that's bad. I think that's necessary to have the accountability piece. You need the hierarchy to have the accountability. If all of us on this call had the task of building an add-on to the Liberty Lake City Hall, and we all had the same status, we would never succeed in doing it. So I think this is, it's really important. So this is extremely common in our society. Every corporation has a CEO, every army has a general, every school has a principal. We tend to think of it as the default or the standard type of organization. But there's a whole nother type, which is called a voluntary association. And in a voluntary association, a group of people come together to achieve a common purpose. They set up some guidelines for themselves, and they select a leader. But the leader is a peer, the leader is an equal. And every city council, planning commission, rotary board, Red Cross board, PTA board, they're all voluntary associations. And to me, one of the biggest problems we have in this country is that our vision of the leader as the captain of industry is so strong that as soon as someone gets elected to one of these leadership positions, they start acting like the boss. And everybody else starts treating them like the boss. And that's not the case on a city council. So here are a few points that follow from that. Each member has an equal right to speak and to try to persuade others to accept their view. During meetings, the chair controls the process, so the group can make the decisions. And during meetings, the chair is the servant of the group, and the group is the final authority. So that's the most important thing I'm going to say today. Again, I'm going to give it to you in red. During meetings, this is only meetings, the chair is the servant of the group, and the group is the final authority. So here's a paper about it, which I wrote with a deliberately provocative title, "The Chair Is Not in Charge of Your Meeting." Now, you have both types of structure. The council forms a voluntary association, and the mayor and staff form an accountability hierarchy. So you've got two different structures going here. What, now I know you know the answer to this one, but what is each person's individual authority? You, as a council member, when you walk out on the street, how much authority and power do you have? Yes, Chris is showing us, no, none, you have zero, zip, zilch, nada. And, you know, we're so individualistic in our society that that seems kind of un-American. But in fact, it's deeply and profoundly American. All members of a governing board share in a joint and collective authority, which exists and can be exercised only when the group is in session. And that's the nature of your power. It's a joint and collective authority. Now, what's your individual power? Legislation is the prerogative of the council. The mayor supports the council but does not decide. Administration is the prerogative of the mayor, and the council may not interfere. So council members may not do the work of the city. Council members may not do the work of the city. Elected officials care deeply about their city, and sometimes they have special knowledge and expertise. They may make suggestions to the mayor, but they may not do the work themselves because they may not cross the line between legislation and administration. This is a legal requirement. So I'm just going to show you a few examples that I've come across in my work over these last 15 years with our cities in Washington State. A council member is a professional architect and has managed numerous civic projects for other jurisdictions. When planning for the new city hall is underway, she spends hours in the public director's, works director's office reviewing the plans and giving advice to the staff about how they should manage the project. Can she do this? No, no, she absolutely can't. And the, the mayor has to be able to tell her she can't without her getting all upset about it. Here's example B. The city is planning to purchase a new watering truck. The staff researches the matter and make a recommendation to the mayor for a purchase. A council member who knows a lot about trucks studies options on his own and obtains a cheaper bid from a different dealer. Can he do this? No, no, he can't do it. A downtown protest goes wrong. It is claimed that the police acted improperly, and the public wants the chief's head. Council members think it is a smear job. At the council meeting, a member moves that the police chief be retained in employment and commended for his excellent work. Can he do this? No, no. I, and in this same city where this happened, I thought this was quite remarkable. There was going to be a search for a new fire chief. And the council member wanted to have a member of the firemen's union on the search committee. And the city manager said, you know, we can't do that because of the charter and the laws of the state of Washington. And the council member replied, I don't find that argument convincing. I thought that was pretty crazy, you know? If you, if you don't find the law convincing, what are you going to be convinced by? So what is your individual power? When people get elected to public office or appointed to a citizen committee, often they're surprised at how little power they have. An individual council member may not have a staff member fired, direct staff oversee employee work product, or interfere in administration. And I know you know this, but you're a policymaker, not a mover and a shaker. Finally, I want to say in this unit that it's okay to disagree. The fact that people have different opinions is a strength, it's a good thing. But we tend to identify with our own position. And when we're defeated, we sometimes take it personally. And this is a mistake. At the end of the day, the body must unite behind its decision. It's a basic democratic principle that the decision of the majority voting at a properly-called meeting is the decision of the body as a whole. And the minority must make it their decision as well. It's a terrible system, but I stand with Winston Churchill when he famously said, "Democracy is the worst system of government in all the world, with the exception of those others that have been tried from time to time." So when serving on a public body, in a democracy, how we decide things is more important than what we decide. So we must have courtesy and respect, no surprises, no unilateral action, no end runs, they're essential. And when serving on a public body, members have a duty to uphold the decision of that body, even if they disagree with it. They may express their disagreement in public, but they may not attempt to undermine the decision. And of course, they're free to try to persuade their colleagues during the meeting to change the decision within limits. So I love this quote from Cornell Clayton, "The willingness to engage in honest debate and lose on issues you care deeply about reaffirms your commitment to common citizenship." I think that's the essence of our democracy. And even more compelling, Elias Kenedy, "The ballot box is sacred because the alternative is blood." And we see this, you know, all across the world. We see so many societies and cultures where decisions are made strictly by force and by power. And I think that it's one of the miracles of our society that we have people like you in your positions as elected officials and staff who are doing this work not because you paid big money, or you're related to the governor, or you've got a private militia, but because you care, because you care about your communities. I feel that the work of our local governments is really extraordinary. It's really a miracle. And I commend you for it, and it's an honor to be working with you because you're keeping things going. You know, my late husband and I served in the Congo. And now our Christmas cards come back, postal service suspended. They don't have postal service, they hardly have roads, schools, or hospitals. And with all our faults and with all our challenges as a nation, you know, you all are keeping the lights on and keeping the wheels turning and serving your community. So I'm very grateful to you. And from the height of that public service announcement, we now get to descend to inappropriate remarks, one of my favorite units. So the fundamental guideline here is that courtesy and respect are required. It's a basic principle of parliamentary procedure that debate must be germane or relevant to the topic at hand. Certain kinds of remarks are inappropriate. So this is, there are five of them. Personal remarks about others, other council members, except for conflict of interest, where you'll have your own policies, I'm sure. Discourteous remarks, insulting language or attacks. Inflammatory language, language that gets people's blood pressure up. Criticizing past actions of the group, with two exceptions. If the subject is under discussion, that's fine by the whole group. Or if the member is going to propose a change to the action, that's fine. But otherwise, you can't just randomly criticize past actions. And then the umbrella is remarks that are not germane, that are not relevant to the discussion. So here's a paper on it, inappropriate remarks on local government councils. So here's a paper on it, inappropriate remarks on local government councils. So during the meeting, council members have a duty, an actual duty, to be polite to their colleagues, staff, and everyone else. It's part of your fiduciary duty of obedience to the goals of the organization. So let's have an example. Let me see that I've got the volume at the proper level here.
You're only saying that because you're a banker.
Okay, so let's go back and look and see what were, what kind of inappropriate remark was that? Anybody want to guess?
Personal.
Personal, it was a personal remark. It's not relevant, it's not relevant, we can't say that. Okay, let's look at another. Robert says, "The measure, not the member, is the subject of debate." So remarks that are not germane, discussion must be relevant to the topic at hand. You want to be vigilant but reasonable about this. And the chair can call a member to order if remarks are not germane. And a member can call another member to order. So I guess I don't have an example for you. But the focus of our meeting is words on paper. The whole point of this meeting, that these meetings that you're holding is the words on the paper. Focus on the motions and not the people who make the motions. And we recommend that council members take this approach outside the meeting also. Focus on actions taken and do not criticize colleagues outside the meeting. I know some city councils where people go on TV to say that their fellow council members are racist. That is not a good thing to do. That is not going to make it easy and viable for you to serve your community. So you just really want to not do that kind of thing. So here's a language tip for germaneness. Members will kindly keep their remarks strictly to the topic under discussion. Now if any question arises, the chair rules subject to appeal. And the chair may also ask the members immediately to decide. It's the group's call. So here's a paper, How To Be Objective About Subjective Comments. And it has a sample script on how to turn to the chair. So no sarcasm, no frowning, no eye rolling, no sighing. And of course, there's the famous deer in the headlights problem, you know, that you hear something and you know it's off, but what are you going to do about it? How are you going to recognize it? So we have a tool that's available to you. It's a cheat sheet. Wait, wait, what should I say? It's available for sale on our website and it lists 30 different situations. And what you can say if you're the chair, that's the first column. If you're a member speaking about another member, that's the second column. And if you're a member speaking about a chair, that's the third column. So just to note, we're speaking here about discussion within council and committee meetings. These prohibitions do not apply to the public when they are giving public comment. And I think the next time that you address your council rules, you might want to change the language in there. Because the language says that a public, the public may not make remarks that are, let's find it here, voting and motions, council agenda. Out of Order Comments, Section 8.6. You all take a look. "The refusal of an individual to desist from inappropriate disparaging or otherwise disruptive remarks after being ruled out of order may subject the individual to removal from the council chambers." You would get in big trouble if you tried this. It would not be a good idea at all. Attendees do not have the right to disrupt the meeting. But in general, the courts have found that mere words do not constitute disruption. If a free speech issue comes to court, often the local government loses the case. So that's something I suggest you take a look at. And we have our paper, Guidelines For Public Comment In Local Government. That goes into this in detail. So I'm going to suggest, in this instance, just a two-minute standard ease so we can stretch a little, because I'm feeling the weight of the hour before we go on to an efficient meeting. Okay, 7:54. Let's romp through the rest of our agenda. Talk about an efficient meeting. So could we ask everybody to mute yourself if you're not speaking? "So it's the duty of the chair to expedite business in every way compatible with the rights of members." I love this, I love this. Members have a right to an efficient meeting. So here are just a few thoughts. And I know a lot of these don't apply to you, but I just want to bring them up because I've seen them in other cities. "Council members must read the packet in advance. It's part of your duty of care to your body. It's not easy, but you just have to do it. If you have questions, send them to the staff in advance. Don't play gotcha with the staff by asking questions in public that could have been addressed and researched ahead of time. If you have amendments to proposed motions, we suggest sending them to the clerk in advance, not to your colleagues, because you don't want to create a serial meeting, but send them to the clerk so that the clerk is prepared. And during the meeting, amendments can be displayed on the screen so everyone knows what is being considered." "We have a paper, Successful Staff Interaction In Local Government Meetings. And if you have any thoughts about this, please do share it with us. Council members should not criticize staff in public and must be courteous to them. If you have concerns, speak to the mayor privately." And why? Because staff and elected officials are in an unequal and hierarchical relationship. Attacking the staff in public when they can't answer back is bullying. It violates the boundary between the duties of the council and the duties of the administration. And it can create a hostile work environment and serious HR problems. We have another paper, Dan?
A question in that regard, Anne, is it a point of order to bring that to objection?
You mean if somebody's doing that, then you could, another member could make a point of order? Yeah, this is, this is inappropriate. We also have this paper, When Should The Clerk Speak Up? Which I was really pleased to be able to distill my work with clerks. I've been training clerks for 15 years. They're my favorite audience because they really, really want to know parliamentary procedure. So you might find this interesting too, giving you some thoughts about the role of the clerk, which is in some respects a difficult one. "The agenda should have proposed times for each item to keep everyone on track, but add all times approximate or estimated to keep flexibility. You don't want to get in a situation where you have to take a formal motion to give yourself five more minutes on a certain topic. And we recommend identifying information, discussion, and decision. Don't use action, because as we've discussed, discussion is an action in a local government." So here's a sample of an agenda, of a public meeting agenda. And here's a slightly different format for a nonprofit meeting. And I'll send those so you can take a look at them in larger size. "The body should establish time limits. We recommend three hours maximum for meetings, five minutes each for individual member discussion and council reports, 30 minutes maximum for public comment, and three minutes maximum for public speakers." Robert says that each member can speak up to 10 minutes at a time, twice during each day on a subject. And that's too long for me. That's a 19th century rule. We think five minutes ought to be plenty. So here's our paper, Time Limits Create Productive Meetings, that goes into a lot of different time aspects. Phil?
Yeah, back to the timeline on the agenda. Is that a suggested idea or is that a Robert's idea?
It's my idea. It's not a Robert's idea, no. Based on years of nonprofit organizations where it all went on too long. So let's look now at what's the point of rules of order? So this is the flow of authority at a meeting. It starts when the group adopts its rules and guidelines, which you have in your resolution here. In attending, members accept the rules of the group. So when you get elected or appointed, you're bound by the rules, whether or not you like them. You can try to change them, but you can't say, oh, I won't go along with them because I didn't pick them. During meetings, the presiding officer applies the rules for the benefit of the group. Now here's a line from Robert. "All persons present at a meeting have an obligation to obey the legitimate orders of the presiding officer." So again, I suggest a little change to your rules here because your rules say that council members and the public shall obey the orders of the mayor. Go pick up my laundry and get me a latte on the way. I think legitimate is a good word to have there. Phil?
What section is that that you're referring to?
It's in the City Council Rules Of Procedure, Item 1.2. I mean, it's understood, we understand that this doesn't mean the mayor can tell you to pick up his laundry, but I think it's better to put the word legitimate in there. "Council members and the public shall obey the orders of the mayor." It's kind of broad, kind of broad. I worked with another council that said all the orders of the mayor. So in their case, it was even more glaring that they needed to correct it. Then, "Any member who disagrees with a ruling, decision, or order by the presiding officer may appeal the ruling. And then the group will decide by majority vote whether the ruling, decision, or order is legitimate." So we have, we have our pyramid in the classical accountability hierarchy. This turns it on its head. This makes, because the last point of it is the presiding officer obeys the group's decision. So we've taken that pyramid and we've inverted it and we've made the group the final authority. That's our fundamental idea here. Then, of course, once that's decided, we go back to having the mayor enforcing the rules. So democracy is fragile and it depends on mutual acceptance and understanding. It can only work if everyone agrees to follow its principles and process. Everyone must know and understand the rules, which is why I'm so happy to have this opportunity to work with you, because you are it. You, the council members, are it. There are no parliamentary police. I could make a good living if our society instituted that office, but it hasn't, it hasn't. There's no police force. And here it is from RCW. "The council shall determine its own rules and order of business and may establish rules for the conduct of council meetings and the maintenance of order." So it's all on your all's head. And here's a diagram that shows the order of authority. We've got federal law, state law, what the code, whatever it is that gives you the right to exist, your bylaws or board rules, special rules of order that you can pick. And then Robert comes at the bottom. People sometimes feel as if Robert is this great overarching authority, but it's at the bottom of the pyramid. So we don't like the idea that guidelines must be enforced. But all human organizations, even benign institutions like hospitals, schools, and retirement communities ultimately depend on power enforcement for their success. So I hope that you all will feel ready, if you should ever come into this kind of situation where you have a difficult or defiant member, to take action. "The power of the group extends to the power to sanction. It's best if board rules of procedure include specific steps to be taken when the guidelines are broken. But if Robert's rules is your authority, which it is, you already have this power." And I have been asked five times in the last six weeks about how to sanction a board member, a council member. Not a good sign. I feel like Zoom meetings are in some respects causing people to behave much more freely and loosely and unfiltered than they would if they were meeting in person. And it's not a good thing. So let's talk about the right kind of control. So in order to apply all this, in order to make this work, you have to have three things. You have to have knowledge of how it works. You have to have a majority on your council in favor of civility and this system. And you have to have the personal moxie, the chutzpah, the energy and the drive to put it all into practice. Now, the city of Puyallup about 10, 15 years ago abolished its rules of civility. They've put them back since, but you know, if you do that, you're not going to be able to make this system work. And it's hard work for a chair. It's hard work for a mayor or a mayor pro tem. You have to really, you know, put your shoulder to the wheel to make the system effective. So the chair must control who speaks when. "The chair serves as a benevolent dictator enforcing the rules that the group has chosen. And individual members must seek recognition before speaking." So if someone speaks up without being recognized, you stop them. If someone speaks out of turn, you interrupt them. If someone makes insulting remarks, you cut them off. So how many of you feel that you could do that if you were chairing a meeting? I see a few hands. Okay, well, practice your muscles, practice your interfering muscles. So members have a duty to obey the chair's directions. If they disagree, they can't argue back. What can they do? What can they do?
Appeal.
Exactly, a point of order or appeal. That's all they can do, they can't argue. And you know, if you feel bad about obeying the chair, you might think of it in terms of obeying democracy, obeying the people, obeying our American system. That's what it all comes down to. When we wrote this constitution, we agreed that we were not going to have a king. We were not going to have somebody by divine right telling us what to do. And so our personal feelings are subject to the greater good of our community and our American system. Dan?
Just to the effect of, for a member who is speaking out of turn, the interruption leads with point of order?
That's right.
That is the method of that interruption?
That's the first thing, yep. So the phrase I like comes from Priya Parker. She calls it a generous authority. You're exercising authority on behalf of the group as a whole. So you want to be businesslike and focused and keep things moving, but at the same time, show humanity and humor when appropriate. And if you don't know her book, The Art Of Gathering, it's a fabulous book. If you organize anything from, you know, maybe shower to a three-day conference, you'll get new ideas and new insights from Priya Parker's book. Another really useful concept is strength versus warmth. So these two folks, Neffinger and Coho, they wrote this book, Compelling People, The Hidden Qualities That Make Us Influential. And they talk about how, on the one hand, when we meet somebody new, we want to know, how strong are you? How capable can you get things done in the world? And on the other hand, we want to know, how warm are you? How caring? How much do you care? Well, to a certain extent, the two qualities are in a hydraulic relationship. And the stronger you appear, the colder you appear. And the warmer you appear, the weaker you appear. So a good leader projects both. A good leader is able to convey both strength and warmth. And their book is full of excellent ideas about how to do it. I think it's really very, very useful. So how should you control? Well, we recommend the Crouching Tiger Method. You see this Sumatran beauty? She's laid out perfectly at ease on her rock, but the minute something happens, she's going to pounce. Don't wait halfway through the meeting to try to establish your authority. And Robert has this wonderful phrase, "The chair should never get excited." And I think that that is really good advice for all of us. And we want to avoid this kind of situation, which some of you may have seen before. It's a real live photo that is not posed. And we can all hope to be spared ever having gotten into that kind of situation in our council meetings. So I'm going to include this language tips for meeting management in your handout. So before we go to the review, I would like, if you're game, to do another short script. Are you willing? Are you willing to do another short script? Okay, all right. This one is called, let me stop the share here. And I'll encourage people who did not take a role before to volunteer first so we can get people here. I'll share the I'll share the screen. And I would be happy to have somebody else be the chair if you like. So, we will end up probably with some people repeating, but that's okay. So, would anybody care to be the chair? Anybody? Mr. Mayor, you want to try it?
Oh, yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Would anybody be the banker? The banker?
I could reprise this if there are no others.
Any, put her hand up. So, we'll let her do that. And how about a botanist? We need a botanist. Okay. Dan will be the botanist. We need a dancer.
I'll be the dancer.
Okay, Phil will be the dancer. We need a facilities committee chair. Facilities committee chair. Hugh, okay. And then a football coach. We need a football coach. Chris, okay. All right. So, can everybody see it? Is it clear to everybody? Yeah? Okay, take it away, Mr. Chair. So, unmuted.
As council members know, when we built our new city hall 10 years ago, it was landscaped according to green principles. We use only the latest energy-efficient tools and methods. However, despite our best efforts, the blackberries and the English ivy have gotten out of hand. The staff recommends that we hire a herd of goats from Brennago. This is funny. In order to trim the grounds. We have goats. That's why I left. Does any member care to make that motion?
I move that the staff be directed to hire a herd of goats from Brennago in order to trim the grounds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the staff be directed to hire a herd of goats from Brennago in order to trim grounds. Do you care to speak to your motion?
This is a very sensible environmentally friendly way to take care of the overgrowth. I know that in Washington State, they use goats all the time to trim the county parks.
I think this is a silly way to tackle this problem. I'm in favor of slash and burn myself. I move that we apply industrial-strength plant killer to destroy the blackberries and the ivy root and branch.
Members are reminded that under Robert's Rules of Order, only one main motion can be considered at a time. We're discussing the proposal to hire a herd of goats, so no other main motion can be made.
I can't believe that you said that. How could anybody be in favor of slash and burn? Have you no consideration for the well-being of our planet? That's just an out-and-out fossil.
Well, in my opinion, your crazy environmental ideas are just as bad. We're going to be sorry we ever got into the smelly goat business.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
Robert's Rule of Order, no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. These members are monopolizing the conversation and also are using insulting language to each other.
The point is well taken. We need to hear from everybody in turn. All discussion must be respectful. Who else would like to speak?
I predicted that all green nonsense was going to give us problems down the line, and look where we are now. I move that we add the words "at a maximum cost of $12,000 per year."
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we amend the motion by adding the words "at a maximum cost of $12,000 per year."
Chair, I'm confused. Does this mean that we've already decided in favor of the goats?
No, the way the system of the motion works, a member must make a motion, or make, a member makes a proposal, a main motion, then other members can move to amend, change the main motion in order to approve it. We will discuss and vote to the amendment, and then we'll take up the main motion again. If the amendment passes, we'll consider the motion as amended. If it fails, we'll return to the original main motion.
Amending the motion in order to improve it. Ah, do they follow that rule in US Congress?
Amen. All discussions must be limited to the topic at hand. Banker, do you care to speak to your amendment?
As far as I'm concerned, the tree huggers are making it impossible to get anything done. Goats will be expensive to maintain. I've heard stories about them costing tens of thousands of dollars. We could lose our shirts with this. We need to set some fiscal limits.
Any further discussion?
It's just common prudence to protect yourself with a clause like this. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor.
Our grounds are pretty big, but I think that 1,000 a month ought to be enough to keep them in good shape. I'm in favor.
In my view, that's not enough money. I doubt that we can get the service we need for that amount. I speak against the amendment.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, I'll take the vote on a motion to amend. If the amendment passes, the motion will read, "That the staff be directed to hire a herd of goats from Brennago in order to trim the grounds at a maximum cost $12,000 per year." All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion passes and the main motion is amended. We will now resume discussion on the main motion as amended.
I'm a nature lover, and I think that this is a brilliant solution. I'm all for it.
It doesn't seem like such a big deal to me. I like landscaping that has rough and unfinished look. It's less artificial.
A natural look is one thing, but I could hardly get out of my car today because of the blackberry bushes.
I'm not so sure about this. I think we're being kind of hasty here. You studied the Zodiac. You'd know that the sun is in the house of harvest these days. Here's what my horoscope said this morning. You need to reach a decision organically. There's no way for you to rush it.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The last speaker's remarks do not appear to be germane to the issue we're discussing.
Uh, sorry. The point is well taken. Where am I at? Sorry, I lost it.
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
There we go. Members are reminded that under Robert's Rules of Order, discussion must be relevant to the topic at hand.
Well, I think that we really, we can't really discuss this unless we look at the governor's report on climate change. I was reading it the other day, and I was really impressed with the official recommendations.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
I believe that the governor's report on climate change is not germane to our discussion right now.
The chair will ask the council to decide this question. All those who believe that the governor's report on climate change is germane on the discussion right now, please say aye.
Aye.
All those believe it's not germane, please say no.
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 The noes have it. The report is not germane, and we will not discuss it at this time.
I don't think we need to hire a herd from Brennago to find the goat. A glance around the chambers should be enough.
Point of order.
State your point.
That is an insulting remark.
The point is well taken. Members will refrain from personal insulting comments and keep the discussion on topic.
It seems to me that goats are kind of smelly and messy. I'm worried that this is going to downgrade our professional image.
It seems to Chair, it seems to the Chair that you're worrying too much about the appearance. Can't you get down from your high horse and consider what's best for the planet?
Whoa, point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The chair is out of line here. In your Robert's rules, the chair has to follow the same rules as the rest of us and may not make personal remarks.
Oh, the point is well taken. The chair apologizes for getting carried away.
I think that this is a great idea. I'm a Capricorn, and a sign of the goat is an excellent omen to our city.
In my opinion, anyone who supports as many ideas is a bozo.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The word bozo is an insult.
The chair will rule that the word bozo is an insult and may not be used.
Appeal.
Appeal.
Second.
Very well. The ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded, so the group will decide. As you know, appeals pertaining to language and decorum cannot be debated. It's just a straight-up or down vote. All those who believe that the ruling of the chair, that bozo, is an insult, should be sustained. Please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those who disagree, please say no.
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 Very well. The ayes have it, and the ruling of the chair sustained. Members may not use the word bozo. Herc, please be sure to record this in a minute. Is there any further discussion on the motion as amended? Very well, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of the motion, "That the staff be directed to hire a herd of goats from Brennago in order to obtain the grounds at a maximum of $12,000 per year," please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Nope.
The ayes have it, and the motion passes, and the staff will move ahead.
Well done. Well done, you all. That was great. That was really fun. Okay, so let's look at our review and conclusion. Those happy words. So, I want to invite you to keep in touch. If you're not already a subscriber, we have a monthly e-newsletter. Love to have you on the list. We have a free blog on the website, weekly insight, tips, and inspiration. And you can also email me anytime. I love parliamentary questions. Be very glad to hear from you. And we have our book, Mastering Council Meetings, which you have some copies of, so that's great. And if you want to develop your meeting muscles further, we have an online course, Take Control of Your Meetings Using Robert's Rules. It goes into detail and gives you the opportunity to learn and internalize this system. Not motions, but the rest of it. It's 16 short videos. The whole thing is just two hours. And we also have some live and on-demand webinars. We have webinars coming up on troubleshooting online meetings and public comment. So, why are we here? I said we were here to invigorate you, to run effective meetings using four fundamental guidelines. So, how do you feel? Do you feel invigorated? Do you feel you've got some new ideas as well as reviewing some old ones? Good, good. Glad to see that. Glad to see that. So, I said we could list four fundamental guidelines, make a point of order when guidelines are broken, label five inappropriate remarks, and make motions and amendments. So, let's just race through this. These are the four fundamental guidelines. The chair is the servant of the group, and the group is the final authority. All members have equal rights, privileges, and obligations to ensure this. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. Courtesy and respect are required, and one thing at a time. So, you'll get the paper about that. And let's just have a quick review on what you should do if somebody makes a remark that's inappropriate.
The report was a cesspool of corruption.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term.
So, that's the method, and when you get inappropriate remarks, be prepared. Be prepared to speak up. For making a motion at the right time, seek recognition from the chair and state your motion. Chair, I move that we issue each council member a $500 bonus in recognition of their service during this pandemic. After the motion is seconded by another member and stated by the chair, explain why you think it's a good idea. To second a motion, you just call out second. You don't need to be recognized. There are eight steps to process a motion that we went through. To amend a motion, during discussion, seek recognition. And once you've been recognized, state your proposed amendment. Chair, I move to amend the motion by striking out the number $500 and inserting the number $5,000. And once another member seconds the amendment, then you explain why it's a good idea. And just remember, the amendment is voted on first. Once the amendment is resolved, discussion may continue on the main motion. Further amendments may be made, and finally, the vote will be taken on the main motion as amended. Here's a paper, Essential Guidelines for City Councils, that I will send you. And this is a whole nother paper. It's called Citizens' Guide to Effective Conduct of Public Meetings. It's not a Jurassic Parliament product. A bunch of us parliamentarians put this together. It's just 10 pages long. It's available for free download on the website, but I'll send it to Anne as well to share with you. And I'm pretty pleased with it. It wasn't easy to distill all of this into a short little guide, but we think it's pretty effective, and it's been shared on the website by MRSC. Of course, they don't endorse the works of private people, but I feel that that's a gesture of confidence that they would be willing to put it on their website. So, why do we need these rules? I want to give you this quote from Richard Rohr. He said, "Win-lose is the only game most of us understand. We have a constant unspoken need for domination and actually find no enjoyment in win-win situations." Now, I'm sure that that's not true of you. I'm sure that you all are on a higher spiritual plane. But as for me, if I'm in a fight, I want to win it. And so, the answer is, of course, to remember that a council meeting is not a fight. And when we start to feel ourselves hardening into position in order to batter our opponent, we have to remember this, and we have to step back a bit. Another quote I like very much is Samuel Johnson, who said kindness is within our power. Liking is not. Kindness is within our power. Liking is not. You can't make yourself like your fellow council members, but you must be kind to them. And the reason you must be kind is that serving on a local government board is like being in a marriage arranged by the citizens. So, you know, you don't have any choice. So kindness is the order of the day. Finally, I just want to mention a concept. It's not original to me, but I love it, that rules are proxies. Let me explain. If we had an ideal platonic universe, you wouldn't be allowed to vote when you had demonstrated that you had a mature, well-educated understanding of public issues of the day. We don't have any way of measuring that, so instead, we say, "You may vote when you're 18." The rule, "Vote when you're 18," is a proxy for the value of maturity. And rules are proxies. They stand for values. They're necessary but limited. They're based on the past. They're always approximate. So, you always want to look to the value that underlies the rule. To me, that's the whole point of Rules of Order. And the key value in Robert is respect. So, I just want to encourage you. I know you do, but I want to mention it as an important thing in these tough times, that you just must treat your fellow council members with respect. And if you don't respect them, which people have said to me sometimes, to me, the answer is act as if you did. Act as if you did. It's the only solution and the only way that we can properly serve our communities. So, it's been a great pleasure to work with you tonight. You've been a wonderful audience, and I appreciate it very much. I'm sorry I got a little bit flustered about the idea of the work meetings and the regular meetings, but I'm sure that you all will solve that and work it out. And I'm going to close my portion. We still have a few minutes, two or three left anyway, if there's a further question. But I'd like to leave you with a wonderful quote, which I think really expresses the values that we should aim for in our local governments. It's from the Tao Te Ching in the sixth century before Christ, and it uses the word Tao, T-A-O, which means the nature or the way of things. "The best leader is one the fact of whose existence is barely known. Next best is one who is loved and praised. Next best is one who is feared, and worst of all is one who is despised. If you fail to trust people, they will not prove to be trustworthy. Therefore, guide others by quietly relying on Tao. And when the work is done, the people will say, 'We did this ourselves.'" And that's my wish for you in the city of Liberty Lake. Thank you. Over to you, Mr. Mayor.
I know that there is a couple of questions for you. I saw a couple of hands coming up. I want to give them an opportunity, obviously. Chris and Odenne, I believe they both had questions.
Chris?
Yeah, so Anne, going back to inappropriate remarks and the duty to be polite. Sometimes it's not the words that are necessarily inappropriate, but maybe the tone in which they're delivered. How do you address that?
So I think it's legitimate to say that council members must speak in a respectful tone and not use offensive body language. And so you could make that your point of order. And by saying it that way, you're not saying that council member is doing this, but you're just bringing it up for the Chair to consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oden? Did you have a thought? No? Okay. Anybody else?
I did have a question in regards to the citizens.
Yes.
When we get to citizen comments and giving them that freedom of speech to be able to ask their questions or make comments. And then you you brought up that they're as long as they're not interrupting that meeting. So if you have a citizen that is using, let's say foul language, or they are bringing their tone up to the point that they're yelling at the council, what would you describe as interrupting a meeting versus just their freedom of speech to state their mind?
Well, the the key verb disrupt, disrupt the meeting. And we have very good papers on our website about this. Attorney, former attorney for the city of Sumner wrote a paper called Wait, Wait, Will Robinson, in which he, or no, Danger, Danger, Will Robinson, in which he describes this in great detail. So I really recommend taking a look at it. The if somebody is shouting and shouting over somebody, that's disruption. If it's their three minutes and they're shouting, pretty probably they can get away with it. The courts allowed, they, now, you all may be familiar with this guy, Alexander Zimmerman, who goes around to city council meetings in Seattle and every other city in the area, and he takes three minutes at every possible meeting and says, you are Nazi murderers, you're oppressors. Eventually, he gets bad enough that they bar him for 28 days, and then he comes back again. So you're going to have to talk to your attorney about it. But the 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 language that's in your rules is too restrictive under the First Amendment. Again, I'm not an attorney, but I can see that that language would not stand up in court. Another example, in the city of Santa Cruz, a person was standing in the back and giving the Nazi salute all through the meeting. And the court found that that was legitimate expression of free speech, that it was not disrupting the meeting. So unfortunately, you know, the the lines are pretty widely drawn. Now, I have mixed feelings. As a conservative old dinosaur, I wish we could stop it, but I also don't see where you can draw a line around that First Amendment that would that would really work, and I believe in the First Amendment. So, you know, I'm kind of stymied to myself. Sorry, I can't give you a better answer. Oh, one more example, one more example. In the city of Port Angeles, a few years ago, the public was getting kind of agitated about fluoridation. And during a public comment period, somebody referred to the four council members on the dais as the four horsemen of the apocalypse. And that Mayor Pro Tem closed the meeting because she felt that they were getting close to a riot. But they were not. They were not, in fact, you know, going to be attacking anybody physically. And she was later censured for having cut off the public's right to speak. There was an investigation, a complaint was brought and an investigation, and she lost. So it's a it's a tough issue. It's a tough issue.
Any other, I believe Dan has a comment or question?
Yeah, great for your work here tonight, Ann. I'd made brief notes. I think you brought forward some specific sections of the procedures for this group, which you think require consideration.
Yes.
If it were possible for you to summarize those afterward as a message or other, I'd be grateful.
Yeah, I'll send you a little note with the ones that struck me. I, again, I'm not an attorney, but but there are, I do see a lot of them, and I do, and a couple of things I really liked. You had an excellent part in here, which I think I need to write a column about. Failure of the city council to adhere to these rules shall not result in any liability to the city, nor shall the same result in any invalidation of city council action. So that's a great statement. It's correct under Robert. You know, failing, minor procedural mistakes do not invalidate action. But I worked with another city, and they had a clause that said anytime the council does something different from these rules, it's automatically waived the rule, and it doesn't need to take a motion to say so. And it was, you know, I felt like this was a get out of jail free card, that that really was was too broad, that you ought to have, you know, some respect for your procedures. You should just say, we'll do what we like, and then afterwards, we'll say that we waived it. I like yours much, much better. So I'll send a little note on that to Ann and Katie.
Are there any other questions or comments by the council?
One comment.
Phil.
On the slide, it's okay to be have a little fun at these meetings. So your quote, Danger, Will Robinson, what movie was that from?
It's a TV show.
It's on Netflix, Lost in Space.
That's it. Okay, great. Thank you for letting me know. Wonderful. I'll get to go watch it. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you. Thank you for being such great actors. You were very good sports about it all. I have a dozen more scripts. If we had more time, we could have a pickle festival and all sorts of other things, so.
Any other questions or comments by council? Okay, we'll take this opportunity for any citizen comments. You can acknowledge your comment request by hitting the chat feature. Ann has a citizen comment to read into.
Thank you, Mayor. Neighbor, staff, and council members, it's encouraging that our public officials are taking the time to address roles, roles, and conduct during public meetings. As one who has been active in attendance at most meetings and who invests as much time as I can helping our community, it is critical that all meetings are conducted efficiently and with civility and decorum. It has been my observation that on occasion, some members have forgotten that they are a part of a team that serves us. And as a result, staff, other members, citizens, and guests have been subject to inappropriate behavior, running from petty figuring to calling staff and other members out in a public forum, something that, in my opinion, is both inexcusable and preventable. I trust that there is a shared goal of having a working understanding of and commitment to following Robert's rules with a more active parliamentarian who assists the presiding member by invoking Rules of Order before an issue gets out of camp. Minor motions, including postponement, tabling, and limiting discussion are important tools that can and should be implemented during meetings. Again and always, thank you for your service. Tom Volker, Liberty Lake resident.
Okay. And then I don't see any other comments.
So, Mr. Mayor.
I want to thank you.
I always suggest thanking, I always suggest thanking the citizens who give comment.
Yeah, absolutely. I was going to say, first off, I want to thank you for taking the time out to do this activity with us, and naturally want to recognize and thank all the staff and city council members that have also taken their time of their busy weeks to be a part of this, as well as the citizens and their engagement. So thank you much, and with nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay, goodbye, all.
Thanks, Ann. Bye.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.